Good evening and welcome to the April 2, 2024, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is public comment. We allot...
Oh, I'm actually okay.
Item three is public comment. We allot by policy up to 21 minutes for a public comment, up to three minutes apiece. And the way we do it is we alternate between the in-person public comment participants and the online public comment participants. We don't...I don't believe we have anyone in person for public comment, and I don't know...
I think you're all set for in-person, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any online...I can't see the online...
No hands up this time.
No hands? All right, let's give...oh, yes, Roxanne.
I just wanted to take this opportunity, Mr. Chair, thank you, to offer condolences on behalf of our Select Board for Ms. Oldfield. Her mom passed away, and she's on the planning board. So I thought it would be nice if we offered that. Thank you.
Yeah, I actually was going to mention that as a potential moment of silence, but why don't we do it right now? Because I was going to offer that in the Chair's report, but let's do it right now. Let's do it right now because it's a good point. Certainly, the Oldfield family has been very important contributors to the civic life of this town for decades. And Mrs. Oldfield is certainly the matriarch of that family. And it was sad news to learn of her passing. And certainly, we extend our condolences to our planning board neighbor Maggie Oldfield and to the entire Oldfield family. And before we have a moment of silence, if anyone else would like to say anything else, please do so. All right. With that, if you would all join in a moment of silence in the memory of Mrs. Margaret Oldfield. Thank you for that.
Very fitting, Mr. Chair, that for a family that's given so much to agriculture and horticulture in this town, that the only thing we could just hear is the sound of birds chirping.
Quite appropriate. Quite appropriate. All right. Thank you for that. Item three is public comment. As I mentioned, we allot by policy up to 21 minutes for public comment, up to three minutes per speaker. And we don't have any public comment participants in person. Mr. Milano, do we have anyone online who has raised their hand for public comment?
Not...we do not.
If you want to take...we'll allow just a few more, a little bit more for people to raise their hand.
Such patience, Mr. Chair.
If you're participating by phone, please press star nine to participate. And I don't have the computer in front of me, so we'll go with Mr. Milano.
None.
Nothing. All right. Well, I think with that, with no objection, we'll move on to item four. Item four is the Statement of Interest Application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We have that statement of interest in our packets. This was highlighted for us at our last meeting by Mr. O'Rourke of the School Building Committee. This is very similar to the applications that have been filed for the previous three years. It's been updated with a more current and more recent statistics, but the essence of the request is the same. Any comments or questions on the Statement of Interest Application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority? Mr. Wells?
The motion that's before us, is this...do you want that to read?
So this is the motion. It's...you have that one? Okay. Yeah, that's the motion.
Want me to read it?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion, having convened an open meeting on April 2, 2024, prior to the SOI submission closing date. The town of Milton Select Board, in accordance with its charter by laws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent of the Milton Public Schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form to be submitted to the MSBCA/BSA by no later than Friday, April 12, 2024, for consideration in 2024 for the Cunningham Elementary School located at 44 Edgell Road, Milton, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories of which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Bullet number one, priority two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding. Bullet number two, which is priority four, prevention of severe overcrowding, expected result from increased enrollments. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or submits the town to filing an application for finding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Musta?
Thank you. Can you just explain a little bit more about the differences? Because I know that they've applied for several...is this the third or the fourth application?
I believe this is the fourth that the town has submitted. And this is an application that is voted on by both the Select Board and the School Committee. I don't know that the School Committee has acted yet. If they haven't, they actually may be acting tonight on this application. And in terms of the specifics on the overcrowding, the numbers have been updated to be more current. The thrust of it is the same. The focus of it is the same. It's really just the numbers that have been updated, the enrollment numbers. And some of the costs that have been put into the schools, most of those are the same. There was some additional costs that were added for FY '23 and FY '24. The discussion under priority two is largely the same, except for the updating of the numbers, the enrollment numbers. And then that's priority two. And let me just go to priority four. I believe it's the same on priority four. Yes. So for example, you'll see in priority two, you'll see the enrollment numbers listed. Those have been updated. I just have them here. I just have to find them. I just have them. The design capacity, utilization rates, and where is it? I just passed it a moment ago. Oh, there it is. So on page 17, you'll see the enrollment numbers at the top, and then the class sizes. The class sizes down below there.
And when...excuse me, when will this be submitted, and when will they find out?
So it's submitted, I believe, April 12. Where are we, April 2? So April 12. Submitted on April 12. Typically, in the past, we have heard in December. And Mr. Milano used to be with the School Building Authority, so he may have some more updated knowledge. But usually, it's been in December that we've heard whether we've received it.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? All right. We don't have anyone online, so this is just...all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Four to zero.
I haven't done that one.
All right. Yes, that felt good. Item six, discussion approval of a resolution citation in support of...
Mr. Chair, you missed number five.
Oh, I missed number five. Sorry. I crossed it off. And I crossed it up by mistake. Item five, discussion.
You were waiting to speak on this, weren't you?
Discussion update approval of the FY 2025 operating capital budget. Let's go to our Chair of the Finance Committee, Ms. Bradley, and then Mr. Milano, supplement if necessary.
You know, if necessary.
Necessary, exactly.
Usually, it would go to the Chair of that committee.
Yes.
So Mr. Zoll and I met last week, and we discussed what was proposed by the School Committee and discussed how it went to capital. And capital had no comment, no vote that was taken on the transfer of capital funds to the operational funds. What Mr. Zoll and I decided to do was that we would request nicely that Nick and Amy work to see if they can find that $250,000, $260,000 from elsewhere, and that we would accept the budget as is. And then, moving forward, if there was an amendment to the budget, that would happen prior to town meeting. Part of that decision was based on the fact that the deadline for printing was pretty much the next week. So we didn't really have the time to start doing that. So that's where we stand right now. I said at the meeting, and I firmly believe that we should not take from capital to make an operating budget happen. Having worked in newspapers for very many years, you don't lose an inch of space. You'll never get it back. So having seen the capital budget over the last seven years, I know that every dollar is important. So I really am hopeful that Mr. Milano and Ms. Dexter are able to find the funding elsewhere because they are important positions at Pierce.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley.
Is there anything else, Mr. Milano?
No, I think that captures the direction I was asked to proceed with, and we'll report back over the next month.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you. Just wondering, it seems like there are a lot of needs. And so I'm just wondering, you know, taking...I don't know where you're going to find it. You guys have been looking hard already. So I'm just wondering, has there been talk of an override for these positions because...for this year, for now? Well, I'm just wondering, because if we don't have the space to take it from somewhere else, you know, it should definitely be something to consider if they're very needed positions, you know, because we have a lot of needs in the town. Thank you.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
We voted as a board to not choose that path this time, and it was a unanimous vote. It was presented about a month ago, six weeks ago, and we all took a vote as to whether or not we needed an override this fiscal year or not. And it was unanimous that we would not have an override this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Just want to respond to that. I think that I want to see if there's any other funds that are found, because I think that that's definitely something to consider and look at seriously. If we're talking about taking from some of the things that I've seen floated around before, I would be concerned. Capital, I know you said was off the table, but you would also...
I said that, but...
Yeah, but you had also talked about legal. I heard something about veterans. There's been a lot of different things out there, so I...
Not from you, not from you, but it was said.
I didn't say it was from you.
No, I know.
Yes, I was not inferring that. But I'm just saying, I think that something, you know, we should really look at that and not jump on, you know, taking it from places that might not be the place to do that, especially if the needs are great.
Mr. Wells?
So capital, we did not vote because the Warren Committee had already voted. There was really no...but we did have a...we had a very...Chair Carroll sits on capital, so we had...and Mr. Milano, we had a pretty open discussion just about the state of everything. I said then, and I'll say now, that we're at the point now where, even though we all realize how important every dollar is to the citizens, that it's time to really think seriously about setting the table for an override a year from now. I don't think...I mean, having been involved in many of them tactically or strategically, I don't see any chance we would either be able to identify exactly what you're going to need on both the town side and the school side. And the last thing you want to do is go forward with one that really hasn't had a year to look at and kind of iron out everything they're going to need, and then lose it and try and come back a year from now. But it may very well be that we don't find the money. I know Amy talked about, you know, we'll see what comes in, free cash, what comes in, and maybe there's some extra money there. I will say Chair Carroll made a very passionate, very passionate and articulate argument. And Mark Loring, remember Mark Loring did the same thing in the conversations I had with him. But we are, you know, we've used opera money, we've done level service, we're getting to the point where if we truly want to maintain the quality of life that people expect when they live here, we're going to have to have this serious talk and start to strategically look at this for a year from now. Thank you. That's pretty much all I have to say on that.
Other comments or questions? So it's fair to say now that the Select Board...well, let me step back. The goal every year is to balance the budget and to get a consensus among the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Warren Committee on a balanced budget to bring to town meeting, or a balanced budget and an override budget, a contingent budget and override budget. So my understanding is now we have the Select Board and the Warren Committee in consensus on a balanced budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And my further understanding is that the difference with our friends on the School Committee is approximately $300,000, including health insurance, which is less than 0.4% of the school budget and less than 0.2% of the overall budget. Important positions, but we're getting to the point where if we can, if we can in the next month, find a way to meet that funding level, then we will have consensus among all three boards on a balanced budget. Is that fair to say, Mr. Milano?
Yes.
All right. And we still haven't got the House One budget.
Right.
We still haven't got the Senate budget, the Governor's budget, cut the town. For the first time in my memory, we have a lower budget by about $600,000. Is it $600,000, Mr. Milano?
No, it's...
Or $400,000?
It's like the state aid was about a $50,000 reduction, but usually, it's going the other direction.
Was chapter 70? Was chapter 70 $600,000 less?
I can double-check the figures, but overall, our net state aid declined year over year for the first time in...
The first time in...
A decade.
Okay. So our state aid declined, which was a surprise. Our projection was that we would have...certainly, we would have been able to cover this extra $300,000 based on our projection of the normal growth of state aid. That was a surprise. So we can hope that that will change with the House budget and the Senate budget, and we'll be able to bridge that $300,000 gap, or that there are other things that we can come up with. This is really the normal process in my experience over the last 13 years. And we've...in our 13 of the 14 years, one year I wasn't involved. And in the 13 years I've been involved, we've been able to achieve consensus among all three bodies every year except one. And there was one year when the School Committee was not agreeable. But every other year, we've been able to achieve consensus. So my hope is that we can, in the next month, prior to town meeting, work to bridge that gap so that we can get a consensus among all three boards on a balanced budget, and that we can bridge that gap, which is, again, less than 0.4% of the overall town...of the school budget and less than 0.2% of the town budget. I will say that these are important positions, but the increase, because of the fact that we are a well-managed town, and we paid off our retirement fund two years early, we had $2.5 million of extra money to spend. We also had $3 million of free cash, which was a benefit as well. So that has allowed us to not have an override this year. Otherwise, we would have had to. But because of those management...because we managed well on those things, it seems to me we've been able to bridge the gap on the budget. And in terms of the school, I mean, it is fair to say that the 8.8% increase in the school budget this year is the largest increase percentage and dollar-wise in more than 20 years, including override years. It's the largest percentage increase in more than 20 years. And we only know 20 years because we only went back 20 years. Could be further than that. And it's a pretty good bet that the $5.4 million increase in the school budget's a pretty good bet that it's the largest in the history of the town. It's certainly the largest in more than 20 years. Again, we didn't go back beyond 20 years, but I'd be surprised if the...because of the way budgets have risen, be surprised if that school budget went up more than $5.4 million back in the 90s, or the 80s, or the 70s, or the 1800s, right? So I think the budget does show a significant commitment to the schools, but we need to bridge the gap on those last few pieces, I think, to try to get a consensus. So, Mr. Wells?
So two points. One point, so people don't forget. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Milano. We had to hold every department on the town side at level service, correct?
Correct.
There's no increase at all. And the second thing, I know we mentioned this before, and you may be on talk, because this is...I know there's some half our county money out there, opera money that we need to be looking. Just, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, we talk pockets of money.
Yep.
I don't know who's giving back, but I know that that time is coming close. And even if we didn't get all of it, one of the things that Chair Carroll mentioned was like, even if they can get one of these, it will be, you know, a significant difference. So...
There may be a blend of different sources.
Make this happen. Yeah, I agree.
We can try to...we can source in the next month in order to see if we can get a consensus among all three boards.
Should we stop paying scratch tickets?
Tonight. Our ball.
So anything further on the budget? All right. So to be continued, we have a month and a week before town meeting, and so hopefully, we can either find a way to get all three boards on board, prior to town meeting or at town meeting perhaps. So, okay. Now, item six, discussion approval, resolution citation in support of the Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers. This...the group Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers came before us...
A few months ago.
Two months ago, two or three months ago.
I'd say three.
Two or three months ago. And they have requested a proclamation and a written support for the...for their efforts to try to help newly arriving families in our community. And so we have a draft proclamation. We have a draft proclamation before us. So comments or questions on the draft proclamation?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve...I want to make sure I have the right one here. To approve the resolution citation, resolution citations in support of Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I think you should read it, Mr. Chair.
I will read it. And I was going to point out the great work being done by this group and the great intentions that this group does have going forward to assist those in need and those who are joining us who are in need. So proclamation...thank you, Mr. Wells. Proclamation reads, whereas Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers is a group formed in February 2023 to help welcome newly arriving families and individuals from Haiti to the Milton community and provide guidance as they transition into their new environment. Whereas thousands of Haitians have come to Massachusetts after being forced to leave their homeland due to extreme violence, chaotic, and rapidly deteriorating political and economic conditions, and threats to safety, food, supplies, clean water, and healthcare. Whereas Milton is a generous community that recognizes the value of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Whereas Milton is uniquely positioned to assist a growing Haitian population because it is already home to many Haitian Americans, thereby ensuring a welcoming environment as well as language and cultural competency to new arrivals. Whereas Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers has established relationships and is working collaboratively with multiple Haitian-serving community organizations, including the Immigrant Family Services Institute in Matapan, the International Institute in New England in Boston, and the Association of Haitian Women in Dorchester. Whereas Milton residents and faith communities have generously donated funds to help support families cover resettlement and living costs as well as other expenses. Whereas Milton residents and faith communities are working with community partners to serve as volunteers to teach English and provide daytime respite and activities for Haitian newcomers who remain without shelter. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Milton Select Board declares its full support of Milton Welcoming Haitian newcomers and their efforts to encourage Milton neighbors, nonprofits, faith communities, businesses, and town agencies to remain attentive to the needs of current Haitian residents experiencing hardships and provide resources to new Haitian families and individuals to ensure that they gain stability and be fully valued members of the Town of Milton and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That is the proclamation, which has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Thank you for that.
Congratulations.
We will...we can sign it. I think we're going to be giving it to you. So we can sign...I can sign it right now if you're leaving, or we can wait till after the meeting.
Ben's not here, though.
What's that?
Mr. Zoll's not here.
No, but the way we did it was just...
Oh, it's all done? Okay.
Was one signature and then listing all the members. So that's the way we're doing it. If you have a few minutes, I think we're going to have a fast meeting, or I can do it right now. You want me to do it right now?
Go do it.
All right. Let me...
Let's do it.
Let's just take a moment.
Yeah, do it.
Time is your greatest utility. I realize that more and more each day.
Congratulations. I appreciate you doing this.
No, thank you. Congratulations to you.
Well, you hired work.
Wish we could give you some money to go with it.
Start growing those trees.
Yeah, no kidding.
Is there holes?
Yeah, the corners.
Tucks on the corners.
Oh, yeah. It doesn't work, though, does it?
Doesn't seem to work.
I think you need to get all four. You want another?
How many people do we need?
I was going to get him another folder.
All right. Thank you all for pursuing that, bringing that to our attention. All right. Item seven, discussion update approval, May 6, 2024, annual town meeting. I demand a review of warrant articles. Any issues there? Mr. Milano?
No, Mr. Chair, just that the Warren Committee has completed their review of the warrant articles and all of their recommendations. The warrant is being finalized now. The members are working on their comments to be incorporated in the warrant, which will be being off to the printer momentarily. On that, if there are any questions about any of the articles or the Warren Committee's recommendations, I'm happy to speak to them.
Here, he can have mine.
Testing, testing, testing. Maybe they can hear me. Maybe they can't.
Green, so that means you're...
Green, so...
Ready to go.
All right. So I'm sorry, Mr. Milano. I was otherwise occupied. What's the net-net on our warrant article?
That the Warren Committee has completed their review and voting on recommendations. That the warrant is being finalized with their comments now, and will be off to the printer in the next couple of days.
I retook Aaron's.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Milano.
But if there are any questions about the warrant articles, I'm happy to respond or the Warren Committee's recommendations. Otherwise, the warrant should be available in...on the website in probably two weeks from yesterday, so April 15.
And I believe this board has voted to...has voted to submit all of the articles to the warrant, and some of the articles, such as the budget articles, the board has voted to approve them. But not... to approve them, but not all of them. And the board can choose to do that between now and in town meeting or at town meeting or on the floor of town meeting. So unless anyone wants to bring up a specific warrant article, we can move on.
Good.
All right. Item eight, discussion approval, MBTA Communities Act, status and issues. Item A is the Attorney General's lawsuit against the town of Milton since last Tuesday. The town on Wednesday filed its answer and counterclaims and also issued the statement that the board voted. Any other comments or questions on item A, which is the lawsuit? Mr. Wells?
You need a motion here, Mr. Chair?
No, no, that's really just an update. I don't believe there's anything to the lawsuit for us to act on at this point. There's been no updates on dates. There's been no updates on briefing schedules. All we have is the the answer and counterclaim that's been filed. Item B is the engagement and fee agreement. We have negotiated with the special counsel on this matter, Kevin Martin of Goodman Proctor. We have negotiated the engagement letter, and the engagement letter provided the hourly rates that Mr. Martin's firm, Goodman Proctor, has for government entities. And those rates are listed in the letter. Senior partners $940 an hour, junior partners $840 an hour, council senior associates $725 an hour, mid-level associates $660 an hour, junior associates $550 an hour, paralegals $420 an hour. What we have done in order to be able to predict what the cost would be of this, rather than have it be open-ended, we have negotiated a fixed fee arrangement with the law firm for consideration of the board. And the operative operative language is found on page three, which which provides the agreement to a fixed fee arrangement for the anticipated work before the Supreme Judicial Court, parentheses, a responsive brief, oral argument, coordination with potential ambicus curi groups, miscellaneous and miscellaneous work before the single justice of $275,000. If the Attorney General moves to dismiss our counterclaims or if we file a second brief before the Supreme Judicial Court, then the parties agree to adjust this fixed fee upwards in good faith to account for such additional work. Fixed fee will be paid $75,000 by June 1, $50,000 by July 1, $55,000 by August 1, $50,000 by September 1, and $50,000 by November 1. So that is the agreement that we have before the board. Mr. Milano, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Chair, that we will number this money in fiscal '24 for this fixed fee as a contract for the services of the $275,000.
Comments or questions?
You want a motion, Mr. Chair?
If there aren't any other comments or questions.
I'll make a motion just for the purpose of discussion if there are more comments. So I'll move to approve the engagement of fee agreement with Attorney Kevin Martin, Goodwood Proctor LLP, unauthorized to town administrator's sign on the board's behalf.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And abstentions?
Me.
Then it's oh, Ms. Musto.
I wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
Before we took the vote?
Nope. After the vote.
So it's 301 is the vote. Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I do have a question for Ms. Bradley. I'm wondering if you could explain a little bit about the abstention because we've had multiple meetings on this, and I'm wondering why at this point you would abstain versus having a yes or a no vote, given the information, you know, we have all the information in front of us. So I'm just trying to understand that for people that voted so that you can, you know, explain it a little bit.
Right. So it's within my rights to have whatever vote I'd like. I can vote in favor, I can vote against, or I can abstain for any issue that's on the select board agenda.
May I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
So I guess my follow-up just is my experience has been usually if you abstain, you you give a reason why, you know, maybe it's you're lacking, you know, some information, and that's why you're abstaining because you don't have information to make a decision. And that's, you know, that's right. So I'm just trying to understand if that's the issue.
It seems to me that the chair of the warrant committee has abstained on every vote that has come to him. So it happens on all different kinds of committees, and it's within my right to do that.
My only follow-up to that would be that on committees, you're not an elected official. So I guess my question is, as an elected official, because people voted for you, for me, and we represent the people, so I'm just trying to get a better handle on it, that's all. Just wanted to know if you had anything else on that.
No, but thank you for the questions.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on item B? This is 8B, item 8B.
I hope you ask the same of Members Zoll.
I will, if he's not here.
All right, all right.
I would if he was here. I actually would ask that because I am, I mean, I know that I've abstained on things and I usually will say why, but I will say why. I don't have enough information. I've said that.
Seeing as most of the votes are taken in an executive committee, I'm not sure that we should even be discussing part of that.
But we've had we've had those votes here, too. Thank you.
All right. Item 8C is letters regarding grant funding. Those letters are in draft form, and we the we need to have them reviewed by council before. So we'll defer that until until the next meeting. I think we can wait till the 23rd on that, and if we can't wait till the 23rd, then we'll just just move forward. Item nine, we can defer. We don't on the discussion approval room and building naming policy. We don't have a draft on that. As soon as we have a draft, we'll go forward with that. Item 10, discussion update, select board policy and public participation. I asked to put this on the.
What, you want more time?
Well, so so we've had a lot of discussion over the last year about public comment. We increased public comment. It was it was actually John Driscoll's suggestion to me that we increase public comment. We increased it from 15 minutes to 21 minutes. We've had some real we've had residents who want wanted, you know, more time at various times, not every meeting, not tonight, right, but some meetings. But it occurs to me, you know, some boards have a public comment which is open-ended. It seems to me there's a balance for this board because we have to get work done.
Right.
We have a lot of work to get done, and we're here late as it is.
As it is, right.
However, it seems to me it would be within the purview of any board and would be up for to each individual board, it seems to me, each individual select board every year to decide what it wants to do. But one idea that we could entertain in the future, this board could entertain, is perhaps having a separate meeting once a month or once a quarter, perhaps. Set aside an hour for public comment, could do it by Zoom to encourage more citizen participation. We could still have public comment, limited public comment during our meetings for, you know, pressing issues when people could do it. But we could add a public comment, a special public comment meeting, again, maybe once a month, maybe once a quarter, in order to to give people the opportunity. And again, Zoom gives us more opportunity to do that. So it's an idea for consideration, for discussion. I don't have anything drafted on it. It seems to me each board could could decide to add a meeting for public comment without putting in policy, but it's just a thought that 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 members may consider. This we're past we're we're down the road this year, but but, you know, the new board that that comes in in beginning of May, beginning of May, might consider doing it. So comments or questions on that? Ms. Musto.
The only thing I would wonder is, a lot of times, public comment is driven by what's on our agenda.
Right.
And so if you're having it at various times, I mean, that's great, but it a lot of times, people, you know, if they see something on the agenda they want to speak on, they're going to go to that meeting versus like tonight, we don't have many people on, right?
Right.
I mean, at least, you know, for public comment. So I think it depends on it's a little bit driven by the agenda, I guess I would say.
Yep, that's right.
That would be my experience. But I I'm open to anything.
Sure. Mr. Wells?
So I'm on the flexible point, trying to keep from having another meeting, but another meeting. I'm willing to like the flexibility of the chair. To me, if the chair looks and we have, you know, a room is packed, the chair says, why don't we let's go, you know, 30 minutes tonight or 45 minutes, I'd be all right with that. Like, I wouldn't on the on the opposite side, I don't want to be sitting here for 45 minutes waiting for someone to like hello, you know, you know what I mean? So, I mean, like, we could have known tonight that we weren't going to have a big public comment, but like Ms. Musto says, on the on the on the agenda, you can tell the agendas we're going to get it on. You could just just I just I think.
Well, maybe we could build more flexibility into our policy. We just have to.
For you.
We just have to make sure that the town council signs off on it because because this issue is driven by case laws, driven by the law, and we have to be consistent in our application of the policy. And so we'd have to make sure that if we were going to be inconsistent in our in our in our in how we did it by meeting, we'd have to make sure that we did it in a way that was consistent under the law, I guess.
I think some communities, Mr. Milano, don't have public comment at all.
That is one direction some groups go in.
Some of them have don't have public comment, and some of them have open-ended public comment, and some of them, like us, have have something in the middle.
Right.
Right? So so it seems to me we've had interest in we've had at certain meetings, we had interest in more people speaking. So it's just something to think about going forward and how we could kind of bridge that gap. It's a good idea, Mr. Wells, if we can do it, if we can come up with a policy that meets the legal standard.
Right.
To have flexibility by meeting, you know? But at the same time, you know, we may have a packed agenda, right? Along with it, so do you want to, you know, do you want to allow an hour and 45, 15 minutes for public comment, and then you'll have a four-hour meeting after that? So that's that's the balance.
Didn't we recently go to 11:59?
Well, I mean, I wonder, sorry.
No, yes.
I'm just wondering if with the flexibility, if you could say, you know, not to exceed, you know, 45 minutes or whatever.
Right, that's a good point.
So if you had a not to exceed clause in it, maybe that would work and give you some flexibility.
So maybe the answer is maybe we maybe we ask Mr. Milano to to consult with town council on what our options are, on on doing it, having some flexibility by meeting and then, you know, as opposed to having an additional meeting, which was which was my initial idea, which doesn't seem to have a whole lot of support, but but but, yeah, we can look at it and we can see what what town council comes up with in terms of options. All right. Anything else? Anything else on that? Discussion approval, change of the board of directors of the Wallaston Golf Club. We have the the application for amendment to change the officers of the Wallaston Golf Club.
Do I see this? Do I see the I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair. I'm just looking for the application has the name. Oh, I got it here. Okay. I'm going to make a motion to I don't see the names on there, though. Are the names on there? Or is it the?
Yeah.
Is it A, B, C, C? No.
A couple more pages into the packet.
Reading backwards?
Where there are reduction redactions, excuse me.
Oh, I got it.
Page there.
Okay. All of these people?
Yes, and then there's four on the next page as well.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve the change of the board of directors at Wallaston Golf Club. With the contact person, the application, the clubhouse manager is Nicole Goula. The name of the principal, which I believe is the president, Patrick O'Brien, the vice president, Stephen Bold, the treasurer, Lawrence Curran, the clerk, Edward Regan, the one director, Ryan Magna, and a second director, R. Bradford Porter, a third director, Mark Tuglia. The next director is John B. Heinz III. The next director is Patrick Matthews, and the final director is John Cronin.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Item 12, discussion approval, one-day liquor license.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license applications for Catholic parishes of the Blue Hills St. Pius the 10th for trivia night in September on Saturday. I'm sorry, on Saturday, April 27th, these dates, 2024, 6:30 to 9:30. The Mary B. Wakefield Arboretum located at 1465 Russell Road, Dogwood Days picnic Saturday, June 1st, 2024, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And finally, the Mary B. Wakefield Arboretum located at 1465 Russell Road, Dogwood Days trivia tour Thursday, June 6th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 13.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the donation from Mike's 5K to crush substance abuse to the Milton Coalition in the amount of $12,500, and thank them very much for this very well-run annual event.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, and just to point, I think it's important to point out, and we should we should acknowledge that this is from the Mulcahy family, and it is an annual donation from Mike's 5K to crush substance abuse. And Mike's 5K was founded in 2017 in memory of Michael Mulcahy, who passed away in 2016 after battling substance misuse for 10 years. And the mission of Mike's 5K is to promote a positive message concerning the drug drug epidemic by erasing the stigma and raising awareness, and they certainly do that throughout the year and particularly with their contributions, their their road race, and particularly with their contributions to the Milton Coalition. So many thanks to to Mike's 5K for everything they're doing for our town. All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Item 14, town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the last week for both Josh Eckhart Lee, who we spoke about last at our previous meeting, and Chris Hayden, current facilities director, is also departing on Friday. So Tom McCarthy, current Assistant DPW Director, has moved over to facilities this week and will assume the role in full beginning on Monday. So we're excited for that transition and, you know, obviously thank Chris for his work over the past year. The Assistant Director of Community Development and Planning job has been posted. If anybody's interested in a career in municipal planning, applications are due by April 26th. And the Assistant DPW Director position is a bargaining unit position, so that position has been posted internally to that manager's union. The Assistant Town Administrator position, we're doing interviews, we had some last week, some this week. And then I just want to mention that some of the Easter egg hunt and festivities by Milton Parks and Rec, I was at the West Roxbury version, so I wasn't in Milton for those, but I've heard it was a it was a good event, so appreciate everybody's work on that. And then lastly, the Health Department's getting ready to release their community health assessment and has submitted a grant application to start putting some of that work, started trying to address some of the issues raised by that. So thank the Health Department for their their continued efforts, and we'll release that publicly once it is complete. And that's all I had this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Chair's report, I just had two things. One, thank you to Parks and Rec for an outstanding Easter egg hunt. I my kids are too old now, so I wasn't there either, but I understand it was an outstanding event. And two, again, our condolences to the Oldfield family, and particularly to Maggie Oldfield from the planning board for that.
Mr. Chair, when you're done, when you're done. So I did, I wanted to wait till we were done. Last week, actually 10 days ago, the town had the sudden death of a longtime employee, Robert Bobby Leonard, who was truly a special man, who anyone who grew up in Eastfield, and he's older than I am, but as Arthur Doyle, our former colleague, Arthur Doyle, mentioned to me that he could always remember seeing him hanging it engine to, his dream was to always be a firefighter. And one of his proudest days was when he was hired at the Milton Cemetery well over 20 years ago, and worked there for several years, and then was able to, because he was in the Samuel, he lateraled, then went to the DPW and finished his career there. He was a a very large man who you could not miss in town. He had a big presence. He had an immense love of the Milton Fire Department, and perhaps one of his proudest days is when he was appointed probably 15 years ago to the Auxiliary Fire Department as a volunteer. And Danny Roeder, another retired employee, had a great picture of him in his fire uniform that he put up the other day. But Bobby died suddenly, and Bobby's truly one of the gentlemen in life who befits the word special, and he was an unique individual, and his loss will be sorely missed by many who knew him and loved him. He's the type of person who, like so many others, just make like like Mrs. Oldfield, make Milton a special place. So I just wanted to mention his passing. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Public comment response. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Public comment response? No public comment. Future meeting dates, April 23rd, and then there probably should be a, a meeting in here for May 1st, Mr. Milano, as well, for an organizational meeting.
Okay, we'll carry that and check with folks' availability.
Because the election is the 30th, so there should be an organizational meeting the, the day after the election, prior to town meeting. So either the-
Six nights?
What's that?
Six.
The meeting is the 6th, right.
Six minutes in a row.
I say three nights, it's over. Open up your schedules for that second week.
From your lips, you tell me.
You got it. I'm telling you right now. If I can help move this along, you'll see me tackling people who go to the microphone. You had enough, sit down. Move the question, Mr. Moderator.
All right, so you should be ready, though. We should be, we should be available on the 1st, just so, just so there can be an organizational meeting. Future agenda items, again, send anything you have. We have a few things we have to put on for the 23rd. Executive session, both executive sessions, we can defer. We don't have anything of moment, but we'll put probably both of them on again for the 23rd, in case we have anything further.
We're really having a week off? We're having next week off?
Weeks off, yeah.
Two weeks in a row.
Really?
Yeah.
Might go away. I can't, I'm working.
All right, item 21.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.